Greetings, folks. So this is our sixth and last town meeting before the end of the IEEE election on October 1st. And today we're going to talk about an interesting topic. I'm calling it broadening the IEEE. And I've actually been working on these ideas with some of the folks who've been helping a big bunch in the campaign. I want to thank them for their effort. There's a few of them on the phone on the meeting here now, as well as some that aren't right, aren't yet anyway. What we're talking about here is going beyond traditional diversity. So traditional diversity will help IEEE be relevant to more people, provide us with different perspectives and insights to help the organization to solve big issues and create new opportunities. And I firmly believe that. And diversity, in this sense, can mean involvement by people of many different backgrounds. First gender, cultural, and different, you know, from different places, different life experiences. Now, those forms are what I'm calling this traditional diversity. That's important to the IEEE. But there's something else that I think is that we need to look into, and I think it's a huge opportunity here, which includes diversity in the sense of bringing more technical fields and those engaged in those fields into the IEEE and interacting with us. So today, there are about as many IEEE members with experience outside of electronics and electrical engineering as there are from those disciplines, which were the original core of what became the IEEE. And this talk and discussion, I mean to, for us to focus on creating a multidisciplinary IEEE and expanding our outreach beyond those who ordinarily would be part of our organization. So there's new skills required for evolving world. And, you know, considering the experience you've had the last couple of years with the, with lockdowns and with doing everything online, you know, it must be obvious that there's things, things that are changing and probably will never go back exactly the way they were before. For a technical organization like the IEEE, I think we need to expand our reach to more technical professionals. And many of today's problems and tomorrow's fortunes are going to involve participation by people from any technical fields. And I think that people coming into technology today are going to have, generally are going to have different perception of what's required or what they're going to be doing than, for many of them, than was true in the past. And I think we need to imagine an IEEE that provides resources for our members to help them become proficient in multidisciplinary skills and thus significantly increase in their value to industry where increasingly companies want their employees to shift what they do very, very quickly between one project, even one field and another. And if we can help our members to be some of the most resilient and useful people in those skills, it will help them in their careers and therefore increase their engagement with IEEE. So I think we need to imagine an IEEE that provides resources for helping our members excel also in a world where humans and machines, and I'm including software in there, work in tandem because increasingly that's going to be so. It's becoming so in manufacturing, but it's also becoming so even in professional and design disciplines. There's, in the past, many careers focused on a single technical field. For instance, I started out background originally in physics. That's where I got my bachelor's degree. And I started working in magnetics and I was a member of the IEEE Magnetic Society. I still am. So like many other people at the time, careers were focused on a single technical field and often in-depth knowledge and experience in a subset of that field, very great knowledge, deep knowledge on particular, subparticular things. And there are still jobs that require that kind of knowledge. But there's an increasing number of jobs and especially entrepreneurial opportunities to create new businesses that require broader knowledge and experience that spans a number of technical disciplines and often requires understanding of soft skills, that is, how to work with people, how to catch people's reactions to things that allow people to work with other people, to get things done with them. That's it. For many of these types of activities, those skills are as important as understanding the physical laws that make our universe work. So again, imagine an IEEE that provides value to professionals with broad knowledge and experience as well as those with deep knowledge and experience. So many technical jobs, another thing to think about is there's many technical jobs, for instance, in information technology, where people are doing technical work and oftentimes very advanced technical work. But, and they don't, but these jobs don't require traditional college degrees. In many countries, the US in particular, for instance, college is very expensive. And many times for one reason or another, and part of it is financial, a big part of it is financial, only a few of those who could attend do attend. So let's think about should IEEE be more involved in training and certification and working with non-college technologists? Should we have a more definite path for those without college degrees but working in technical fields to be part of the IEEE? And that could be another, another path for future membership growth. Most jobs today are transitory, and the transitory nature of these jobs means that mastering broad systems level understanding of things and the way things work together and soft skills is very important because it helps you to be resilient, to find, to find and engage with new opportunities. And during their careers, many of our members are finding and will find themselves looking for new jobs and even new types of work in new fields. And increasingly, and probably even more so in the future, many of these new fields and many of these new types of jobs have never existed before. In fact, there's recently, at the 2021 CES show, there's a fellow from Deloitte that was projecting that 65% of those people in grade school today work in jobs that do not yet exist. You know, so it seems like there's, there's trends here for these new multidisciplinary activities that if we can help our members to excel in, we provide real value to them. Some of our members will start their own businesses where multidisciplinary skills are crucial to success. And understanding and mastery of broad concepts and people's skills are critical to working in today's economy. IEEE, I think, must embrace this reality and help our members gain the skills will enable them to be successful in this new world. Doing so will enhance the value of IEEE membership and will help us attract and retain young members and members in the industry. Now, an example where skills, multidisciplinary skills are important is, for instance, let's imagine an entrepreneur who's developing advanced autonomous devices, for instance, self-driving capability in cars. That could combine computer science, systems engineering, mechanical engineering and robotics, electrical engineering, advanced data sciences and a number of other disciplines, you know, including civil engineering for that matter. So it's, I think it's, you know, clear that if we could do these kinds of things, we can imagine IEEE that helps our members to respond to this need. It will be of enormous value to them. So IEEE, I think, must provide and promote educational experiences as well as creating partnerships, perhaps even acquisitions, that make the organization a leader in helping our members become a successful, become a successful multidisciplinary professionals. In addition, I think a path to membership growth would be by providing membership and education and certification opportunities for those without college degrees. And doing these things will not only create greater value for our members, but also for the companies and industries for whom those members will work or will even help to create. Making these changes will require efforts in the IEEE, I think, at the local level, at the institutional level and in educational institutions where many of our members work. Imagine, I think, an IEEE that creates the sort of multidisciplinary professionals that are needed to solve the world's problems and to create new and vast opportunities that will increase health, wealth and opportunities for all humans. We would truly provide value to the world and for our members. As a result, I believe that IEEE could grow in size and influence, provide hope and inspiration for a world that certainly needs both. So I'd like to ask you a question. And, and this is sort of the focus of what I'd like to have the discussion about today, is what do you think about creating a multidisciplinary IEEE? And with that, I want to thank you, folks, and the IEEE elections are open until October 1st. So it's not too late to vote. And the history has been that less than 20% of eligible IEEE members have been voting in recent elections. I'd love us to have, in this election, us have more than 20% of the people that are voting. So whoever you vote for, I urge you to vote and encourage your IEEE friends to vote in the 2021 IEEE president-elect election. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think your points are very true and very valuable there in, in terms of how IEEE should certainly be a very multidisciplinary type of organization. I come from the mechanical engineering side and found a lot of value from IEEE.
Yeah, and for instance, Dan and I both have backgrounds in physics. You know, Dan Lotus, who's also of many different disciplines than the IEEE. And I believe that we could leverage that and that diversity of skills and grow it even more, recognize that and build upon that to create an IEEE that is, provides even more value to its members and to industry, which I think are two exceedingly important goals that we need to have in the IEEE. And particularly, and this one of the most important ones, I think, is being able to attract and retain younger members in the IEEE, especially as they go from student members to make it attractive and useful for them to think of being full IEEE members, professional members, and staying IEEE members. If we do things like this, we can provide, I believe, value to them throughout their careers. There's things we could do, I think, to help to create that connection. Part of it also is get the word out, which is another thing that IEEE needs to work, to do a better job of is the whole communications thing and, you know, letting people know, you know, what it's got, what it's good for and to listen to them on things they'd like to have and respond and act on those. What changes would IEEE need to adopt to evaluate the potential members without a four-year degree? So I believe that if you don't have a four-year degree, you could be what's called an associate member, but not a full member of the IEEE. And I think, and in fact, this whole associate member thing is something that has not worked out very well. There's oftentimes people even graduate from college that unless the IEEE finds out that they graduated from college, they stay associate members. We have an amusing story about someone who was elected Santa Clara Valley section chair at one point, who is an associate member rather than a full member, and we had to take care of getting him to become a full member. So I think one of the things we could do is do a better job of how we can either, either make them full members or have a path to becoming full members that is more apparent. And actually, that rather than just having this be something that happens, but no one really knows about, something that we actually use as a feature and as some way to attract these people. In other words, you could become an IEEE member and you could advance in your IEEE membership by participating in IEEE activities that, for instance, would be seen as giving you the equivalent sort of the experiences that's, or capabilities that somebody who went to college had. You know, which of course is quite a broad area how we would do that. But I think this could be a path that we use fairly, you know, without changing a lot of things. That would be, I think, we could, we could implement. And for instance, we could reach out to people in information technology fields and other technical fields where those folks are doing oftentimes highly technical work, but they don't have degrees. And we could be a resource to them. We could provide perhaps certification capabilities and knowledge, practical knowledge is what I'm talking about in particular, that could go beyond what they might get from, from current organizations. Or I mentioned acquisitions, maybe we could even acquire some of those organizations. They could become part of IEEE and part of our plans for growth. So those are some ideas on how I think we might, we might do, do this, Brandon. There's, there may be other ideas as well, and I'm very open to suggestions on that. Thank you.
Would that include working perhaps with, I know like Google has their certification program, certain things that they're certifying and they'll say, you know, we'll hire you if you pass these, pass these things. So working with maybe industry and some of these alternative education organizations, if you will?
Absolutely. I think that's, that's critical. And I think part of that is, maybe for instance, what if we could work with that in traditional educational institutions that IEEE has current outreach? But what if we could expand that to, say, community colleges or technical training organizations? Where IEEE gets involved and help in working with companies that are developing, for instance, information technology like a Google or an Amazon or folks like that, to work with them on implementing those technologies? And as, and as part of that, also providing a path to IEEE membership. So I think there's some real, real good possibilities of doing that, which I think would have, help us create stronger ties with the industry and provide value to current members who could then also have access to those content as part of their IEEE membership. Therefore strengthening its value for them to become, you know, again, these multidisciplinary people, but also providing a value for new types of people to get engaged with IEEE. And what I think is especially important in this, especially for attracting industry, is a lot of this, this technology and learning is going to be practically oriented. It's how to do things. Okay? And that's where IEEE originally came from, was people who created industries, people who did things, made things happen. You know, academia and developments in academia are an important element of that. But unless it's tied, I think, more appropriately to folks that were also implementing things, then, you know, we're missing a whole element of training and connection with a vast group of people that I think we ought to be, we, we should be engaging with. Here's a question. Would IEEE have to sacrifice its current traditional educational offerings to provide multidisciplinary and non-college degree offerings? I don't think so. And I think part of that might be things like, like we're just discussing there is, you know, we could partner with organizations that have skill training and maybe work with them on, on furthering their capability of getting people trained in those areas. You know, so I, I think it could be a compliment and even strengthen some of our traditional educational offerings. In fact, I heard some discussion with folks who are involved in IEEE's ILM, its learning network. Is, is that a lot of the people who are interested in this are more like the professional engineer that have continuing education credits. But what if we could create value there that would expand that market beyond those, those people that have to take these credits, right? Because they have a professional engineering license they need to maintain to those that would like to make more money, get engaged in new economies. Okay, for instance, getting these multidisciplinary skills. So we broaden that influence. So I think it's something we can build on. A lot of the things we're already doing, it expands it, it gets it out even further, perhaps even creates more value for the stuff we have as well as creating new content. We'd like to say that I'm thrilled you're focusing on the beyond the EE part of IEEE. I personally haven't done specific EE since college, but I'm still engineer, right? And have many, many colleagues would probably join IEEE if they felt related to them more, meaning if they don't have to have an EE background. Absolutely true. And I think, you know, like I say, already there's an enormous number of us in IEEE who come from different backgrounds, you know, or are doing different kind of work, you know? If you're an, if you're a manager or selling something, you know, often, often if you're an engineer background, you're doing this because it's a technical sale oftentimes. But IEEE can still have value to you. And we need to reach out to find ways in which we can help on those values to attract people who do the kind of jobs that are in industry and customize or create probably new offerings or modifying some of our older offerings to make those more attractive to those kind of people. Thanks Denise. I'm glad, and I'm glad you're able to get your, your comment, your comment in there. Thank you.
Beaming, it's very, very true. I, I don't think IEEE really promotes that directly, that multidisciplinary aspect for membership. You know, it, it probably should be much more front and center, much more a focus of membership activities and.
Oh, we can. Go ahead Denise.
Okay, that's sorry. I wasn't sure. I just didn't want to barge in. No, I just, I mean, I, to me, this is so huge. And when I saw Tom was talking about this, I was so excited. Tom, I met you in Austin. We went and saw the bats together for women in engineering. And yeah, I've met you a few times over the years.
Sure.
And so I honestly, I don't know if it's the name, the IEEE or what it is. But when I interact with students, for example, they're just so gung ho set on the fact that EE is IEEE and that, you know, they can't be, even mechanical engineers, I, I just don't think they realize. And then if you fast forward to when people are actually already working, like you said, what about a sales engineer? Like I'm a customer success manager and I'm still very technical. But I'm, I deal with salespeople, I deal with, you know, customers, I deal with all kinds of marketing and, and I'm so involved in IEEE. It's a huge part of my life and I feel like all my friends are missing out. But I don't think they, they just don't get it. No matter how many times I try to have these, I'd have to sort of have a one-on-one conversation with them individually to get them to realize there's so many leadership opportunities for you. There's so many ways to impact students and other professionals. There's so many ways to give back to the world. There's so many ways to, you know, never mind the EE part. Get that out of your head, you know, and it's frustrating.
Make sure to tell them about.
You know?
Make sure to tell them about Tom Coughlin and how he really stands for these types of.
Absolutely. And I already voted.
Oh, thank you Denise.
Doing such a great job.
I really agree with, oh, thank you. And I really agree that it's, you know, we need to find more ways to reach out to folks and that IEEE is not just electrical engineers, you know? You know, computer scientists aren't just in the ACM, you know, data scientists aren't just in, you know, DevOps, things, things of that sort, you know, that there really can be value in, in a new type of professional organization that still has, you know, has the kind of respectability and integrity, you know, of traditional professional organizations. But it reaches out and engages with more people. And the thing is, is that, like you say Denise, you know, I mean, for you and me, I think we've been volunteers. We realize how much fun this is and how much, how many connections you can make. And personally, I've like gotten a lot of business from people I know through the IEEE, you know? Yeah, and, and it's, the volunteer opportunities are chances to learn leadership skills, working with other people without getting fired, or at least if you get fired, you're not losing any money out of it.
My last job reference was, well, one of my biggest job references was an IEEE high-profile member recently for a job that I just got. And, and, you know, my manager, who's the CEO, said that, you know, her reference meant the most to him out of all the one, and you know, I've never quote unquote, "worked for this person." I've just volunteered, you know, bazillions of times over the years. And but it was also the same sort of person who I would go to if I wanted to make a career change and say, you know, based on what you know of me and what I've done, what do you think? And what are some areas I could grow myself in? And it, there's no other place in, like, I feel like in my world that I can get that kind of broad experience and have all these people around me that are so smart and have such varied experience. And you just don't get that anywhere else. It's just, you know, I just don't think so.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll tell you, oh, it's a, it's a weird little, it's sort of anecdotal. But so when I was president of IEEE USA, we were like looking at, you know, IEEE does these salary surveys, things of that sort. And so we have results from the salary survey that we do of our members, you know? And there's like large number of numbers, these are mostly in the US, so it's US comparison. But we looked at those salary numbers on average, you know, and, you know, you could argue it's just the significant or not. But the salary earnings of those, of those IEEE members from the salary survey tended to be a lot higher than the general Bureau of Labor Statistics salaries for people of disciplines that seemed like they would be equivalent to IEEE members. You know, again, it's anecdotal, but you know, maybe there's some, maybe something about joining a group like this, I hate to say this, makes you smarter or at least means that you're making an effort to, to be a, be a continuing professional and to improve yourself or to engage with people, whether you're doing that or not. That may be one of the, you know, you're giving yourself new experiences and new, new exposure. So I don't know if that's true or not, but I thought it was kind of interesting when we did that analysis. Okay, we got a few more questions here. Oh, thanks Denise. I appreciate you joining us here. Yeah, there's talk about whether we should change the name of IEEE. But on the other hand, like, a lot of times people are, IEEE is the official name. It's not the Institute of Electrical Electronic Engineers, although a lot of people, you know, say that. And I think part of the reason for doing that, you know, making that change is like IBM or, or SA, you know, or other companies, you know, where it's just initials, you know? It used to mean something like international business machines is IBM. Now, but now people know it as IBM. They probably wouldn't even know what an international, what a business machine was. You know, and IEEE, I think it's relabeled that way because they're hoping it can be something like that, that appeals to more folks. I think we should embrace, we, we can, we, it, changing the name of something is a big deal. You probably spend, if your president tried to do that, you'd probably spend all your presidency trying to do that. I think as much as we can to work around stuff that already exists and try to make it work. You know, again, if I was elected president, you know, I've got a small amount of time to try to get things done. And I know that from my experience trying to do things in IEEE USA. So I'd want to focus on stuff where I can have the most impact, hopefully the most impact, the most chance of success and the time allotted. Let's see, here's another comment. Perhaps we could do more to champion two-year colleges, also apprenticeship programs. Absolutely. I think we should be crawling all over these things. You know, it's to be like spiders or like honeybees, honeybees on, spiders on honey, let's say. You know, that we should be engaging with community colleges, two-year colleges, apprenticeships, internships, things of that sort. I would love, for instance, again, this is just working with our traditional student members, but that IEEE, and this is brought up in one of these town meetings, engage with companies on career recruitment events and helping them to engage with our student branch members on recruitments. You know, and for one thing, it would let, I think it would lead these IEEE student members who got jobs or got good connections with people in companies or potential hiring, whatever it was, through the IEEE, it would show, it would be a definite engagement with the IEEE that probably would give them positive impressions of the organization and would increase their likelihood of becoming professional members after college. There's things like that or, you know, helping them with get internships more proactively, apprenticeship programs, and then I think evolving this, we go even more into the trade schools, appropriate trade schools, if you will, if they exist anymore, community colleges, apprenticeship programs of various sorts would make a lot of sense too. Different ones are going to have different complications. Some things may be easier than others. But I'd love us to see, make, start to make some progress, to start to move in this direction, to embrace the fact that IEEE has to be universal, covers all technology if it's going to be as, as successful it can be. And if it can do that, provide real value to our members, I think, value to, and the creation of the industry and new industry and also help in terms, because a lot of the solutions to today's problems are going to be tech, are going to involve technology if they're not, technology is not the solution. It's going to involve it. And many of the opportunities it faces, in a prior talk, I spoke about development of outer space, extrasolar resources, that this is huge. There's more stuff outside of the earth or is inside the earth. There's more energy off the earth and in the earth, you know? Technology is the path by which we will, we will reach out and become the, you know, whatever mankind is striving to become, whatever it is in our nature. And I think whatever that is, it involves learning more about the world, being more engaged with the world and being in more places and hopefully surviving rocks that can hit the earth and, you know, and potentially wipe us out because we're in more than one place and we don't have all our eggs in one basket. So anyway, those are some thoughts on that. Let's see. Got some more questions coming in here. So what are examples of problems that can be solved by multiple disciplinary teams of people? So I'll tell you one example that many companies had to deal with recently was how can we keep our employees functional and working when they're no longer in the office? And I think this has led to tools like we're using here getting better. It's, I think, leading eventually to creating more immersive tools, which will involve not just traditional electrical engineering disciplines, but understanding of materials, understanding of, you know, creating new battery technologies. So the people could have things that, for instance, maybe some artificial reality devices that they, that are lightweight, they can carry with them. That will allow us, even if we're remote from each other, to have this, not the same as, as physical interaction, but could emulate many of those things and allow virtual meetings to be much more engaging than they are so far. I think one of the things we've learned in the last two years is it's great. We have this technology, we can do this stuff. But golly gee, this could be a lot better than it is. And it could be a lot more, it could allow us to work with each other a lot more easily than, than we've been able, than we've been able to do. And I think that's, you know, that's, that's going to lead to a lot of different disciplines getting involved in that, from computer science to materials, understanding of materials, creation of new battery technologies, other technologies, and the creation of content and the way that you organize stuff when you work in this kind of, this way, rather than the traditional way that people work, that people work. So, oh, by the way, another thing would be, and I think I talked about this in another one of my talks here was, what if I could have telepresence robots that really was like someone else's in the room? You know, can move around and interact with people. So again, that involves more disciplines, involves many electronics-related disciplines, but also involves a lot of mechanical disciplines as well. And so I think those are some examples. The other one I gave was creating autonomous devices of various sorts. And then, and then there's this whole area of as AI, you know, as it is right now, and AI is, is not going to be the general AI that's going to be just like us for some time to come. But it's be, I think it's going to become more and more easy for ordinary technical humans to be able to pick up and use. It will become more like components I plug in and use. And there's going to be a lot of jobs that are going to be machines and software working in tandem with human beings to. And there's going to be a lot of jobs that are going to be, uh, ma- machines and software, working in tandem with human beings to accomplish tasks, which leverages the capability of this individual human beings, gives them superpowers in a way, you know, that they would not have by themselves, that they could learn things faster, that they could respond faster, that they could have a more comprehensive view of things than they might otherwise have. Um, and I think that's going to lead to new types of work and work that spans many, many different areas of knowledge, for example. So those are a couple of, uh, a few examples of the kind of problems I think that we could solve with multidisciplinary, uh, people, and I think we should, uh, we should strive to become, um, a haven for those people in the IEEE. There's one related to that, what can IEEE do to help prepare its members for working in tandem with machines or software? Um, I think they should join the IEEE. That's the first thing, but the reason why is because we already got stuff in these areas and, uh, and I think we can develop, we can develop them, uh, uh, fur- further, you know, that, uh, uh, IEEE, uh, can be creating, um, working with organizations, like what, what if we work with industry and how to bring AI into almost every facet of people's work, you know, working with companies that are developing AI tools and helping to train people on how to use those tools to accomplish tasks, uh, and new types of work. I think those are things that we, that could be an active thing that we do, reaching out to industry that is working in these fields and helping them to get more people familiar with their tools. I think we need to do it in a way where we're not just talking for one vendor, where, uh, we're creating and perhaps even standardizing it, which is another thing IEEE do, does, and certifying the best tools for doing these things and helping people to learn, have the best learning experience to be able to engage with and make the best use of these tools. I think there's enormous opportunities for us to do this, this is another way, by the way, uh, we have many members, uh, who are in academia, that we could help our academic members to, uh, uh, help their students develop more, um, skills that will be useful for them in, in the future workforce, in the modern and future workforce, as we become increasingly, uh, dependent upon these machines to do the new types of things that human beings will be expected to be able to do. And, um, so I think there's an enormous number of opportunities there, I think many of them actually stand upon, um, the current things that IEEE is really good at, IEEE is very involved in education, many of our members are. Um, IEEE, uh, had, you know, uh, we're involved in a lot of industries, you know, but we need to be able to pull that together more um, and focus on that ability to draw in multiple disciplines, offerings that are practical, practical use to people. Uh, and, uh, you know, again, standardize them, help certifying them, maybe work with other organizations, uh, both trade groups as well as, uh, as companies on, uh, making these things happen, and it, part of this might be identifying what are the best opportunities, things we should start with, and where could this go from there, and developing a future plan around that. So I hope that helps a little bit.
You know, Tom, one thing I've kind of put in the comments was, it seems like the Consultants Network of Silicon Valley may be a, a, a model to some extent to where the IEEE could go, because it seems like has a diverse membership as well as diverse programming, maybe you want to comment on that?
Sure, so, um, there's this, uh, it originally developed, uh, developed many years ago, this idea of the Consultants Network, and it was, uh, um, it actually, uh, there's a Consultants Networks that are organized by IEEE USA. And so that's kind of a, a consolidating group around that. But, um, one of the early groups that was formed actually was in the Silicon Valley, which is called the Consultants Network Silicon Valley. Um, it's connected to the, this broader IEEE USA Consultants Network Organization. Um, but it also is very independent, um, in many ways, and, um, it's the members, there's, uh, I don't remember the exact number, it's well over 200 right now, um, our friend Brian Berg would know the exact number. But, uh, it's, uh, got lawyers in it, it's got, uh, uh, software people in it, it's got people that build websites in it, it's got engineers of all types in it, uh, people that do expert witness work, people that do, uh, that have their own little companies, you know, and they, they, they bring in consultants and contractors to help get things done. It is in, and, and many of these projects, and many of the talks they've been giving in Consultants Network have been very multidisciplinary and very broad-ranging, so I think it, it is kind of a, a little microcosm model of what this could be like. You know, what if we had a lot of engineers, we had mechanical engineers, Kim's a member, for instance, I'm a member.
Yeah, I think we all are.
He's a member, you're a member.
Not a coincidence.
And, uh, can't, yeah, yeah, um, so I think it really is, go ahead.
May- maybe you can, uh, comment on the, the fact that CNSV, like a few other organizations in IEEE, such as the SSIT, that you and I, with which you and I are both familiar, and you started a local chapter, not only is the CNSV multidisciplinary in, in the sense that it has attracted consultants and professionals with different expertise, but there are a lot of professionals who, like Kim and you and myself, have an academic background that is, you know, physics or mechanical engineering, but we've been all over the map during our careers, and even today, we, you know, we, we don't wear any single uh, hat in a, in a, in a discipline-type manner, and that's more and more of what the IEEE looks like.
I agree, I think, uh, the IEEE, it, it, it's become multidisciplinary, and I really believe that we need to embrace that and grow that and use that as, uh, as a path for advancing, improving and increasing. Uh, and making the IEEE, uh, the IEEE and making it more exciting, you know? You know, if we were the, you know, kind of one shop, smart, smart, multidisciplinary house for finding people that can solve any kind of technical problem, give advice, um, have good, uh, ethical prin- you know, promote good ethical principles and design, all this kind of stuff, these are all things are engaged in. We could really leverage that stuff a lot more than we are and expand it um, to create real value, I think, for our members and, uh, for those people that our members work for, or for those people that will work for our members. You know, um, you know, and we need to do a lot more of that, that's the, uh, one of, another one of the things I've often felt we need is IEEE needs to have a better PR campaign. You know, we, we need to have the values there, but then we need to expand on them and really embrace them and champion them. How could we improve education for this new multidisciplinary world? Well, I think there's been some ideas brought up, you know, Brennan brought up, uh, uh, two-year colleges, you know, community colleges, apprenticeship programs, things of that sort, I think those are all very important. But you know what? I think it starts even earlier than that, you know, um, and, and it, it's, uh, it's led, and again, as part of this is the PR, part of this is, is IEEE, um, getting engaged in multidisciplinary STEM activities that get people interested in science and technology as itself. You know, all the, the diversity and wonderful, uh, variety of things that, uh, like when I was a kid, you know, I was just interested in the way things work, I liked to take them apart, sometimes I'd put it back together. Um, I like, you know, get them to work, sometimes not. Um, you know, and I wanted to understand things, and I just did that all the time, it wasn't, and it wasn't focused on one thing. I, I really think, you know, in a sense, you know, um, we could be those people, and especially I think is very, very important for folks like, like girls that oftentimes get discouraged from being involved in technology, finding the role models, finding examples, but it's true for everybody, uh, and encouraging participation in these STEM activities by the younger folks, in other words, try to foster and provide resources for those people that are interested in, potentially interested in becoming in technology, or at the very least could be educated citizens who have knowledge of technology and its meaning and will not be misled by information that, that, uh, that, for instance, may, uh, sidestep science, you know, uh, and, and appeal to something beyond natural physical laws, uh, that, uh, you know, uh, in a sense that, you know, you can't make good objective judgments on things, so we, I think building up, building things up at that, uh, early STEM level, I think is important as well. And I think we should be engaged in that, you know, uh, how much we do depends upon a lot of things, but I think it definitely needs to continue to be a focus of our activities, and I think it's a, uh, part of, beyond the things we do for those that are members or near members, you know, for those that could become members, and for a general educated population that uh, has knowledge of science and technology and its applications and what it can do, and therefore may be, uh, more appreciative of, of, uh, those things as they develop and understand things, uh, um, and put things in context and have a basis for, uh, you know, if something does need to be changed, they, they have an understanding of what the problem, a better, a better practical understanding of the problems and, uh, you know, what that might require in order to be able to, uh, to resolve them. Will industry find greater value in IEEE members who have these new skills? I think so. And actually, to, although we don't do as good a job as we can of these things, we probably buy people being members of IEEE, they may have, um, connections to more perspectives and more, uh, insights on things and be already a little bit more aware of, of broader implications of technology than just their current job. So in a, in a sense, if there was something to those numbers on the salary survey stuff that I was talking about, between the IEEE salary survey and the Bureau of Labor, IEEE, or the US Bureau of Labor Statistics numbers, maybe it has something to do with that, um, in other words, there already is value, there may already be some value for our members being part of IEEE, that they do get exposed to more things than they might if they were not a member of the IEEE, if they choose to and embrace that. Um, on the other hand, uh, I think we can go much further, and I think we can create even greater value, uh, and as we talked about, a lot of things that gave us stronger connections to industry and the things that will, that we could make our members, uh, the out, help our members to become outstanding in, uh, as, uh, uh, either people working in companies to get things done, or starting their own companies to make, uh, to create the future. Uh, here's Scott here, okay. Uh, Scott, uh, speaking of getting younger kids in engineering, any thoughts in terms of promotion doing IEEE junior-type club at high schools, even elementary schools? You know, I've often thought it'd be kind of cool if you could be a, sort of a junior woodchuck, uh, IEEE member, for those that are, you know, Donald Duck, uh, fans. Um, it, you know, that there's some way that they could engage, uh, with IEEE, you know, with, uh, IEEE and, and the various fields and things that we do, um, at, at the lower level. Um, and even if it was just, uh, you know, just sending a newsletter out on a regular basis to people, they could sign up, they could get a, you know, uh, uh, something they could print out saying, I'm a junior IEEE, I'm a junior IEEE member, you know, or something like that. I think it actually would be a great idea if we, if we could find a way to do something like that. It doesn't have to be expensive, but a way they can connect with us and as they advance, and they could have a source of pride that I, geez, these people are, are doing these really cool things, and I'm part of that in some way. You know, that could then lead them to further engagement later in life as well, and also perhaps even engaging their parents, uh, you know, wow, he's a junior IEEE, or IEEE member. Um, that's, that's kind of cool, you know, what does that mean? Can I help him out? You know, what is this thing anyway? Um, so I think there's some really, uh, good possibilities, and I would love to see us, uh, uh, more involved in outreach to the next generation of technologists, scientists, uh, uh, and engineers. Robert Beerwulf has two questions. What is the very first thing to, uh, that you will address and change? Okay, um. The, in the IEEE, the, the, the thing that I would most like to change, you know, and I believe it's almost fundamental to everything else, and I'll explain why, is I want to increase the retention of the, the conversion of student members to full professional members, increase that rate. And especially to improve our retention rate of young professionals in the IEEE. And why I say that's multifaceted and important is, in order to do that, we've got to provide and demonstrate value to these people. And a lot of the demonstration of value, not all of it, but a lot of it's going to be new ways in which we can help those people in their careers and stronger connections to industry and providing value to industry by our members, as well as providing value to our members to be better engaged in industry and to do more and to create more and to be more successful as a consequence of that. So that's kind of like, like my number one thing I want to address. Now, there's other things that are ancillary to that, that are connected to that, of course, but if I were to get, if, if there's one single objective I think we could do, that in itself would help a lot, IEEE is especially true of IEEE in USA has been aging, and, uh, we need, if we're going to stay relevant and we're going to stay fresh and engaged in the stuff that matters today, we have to have these younger members be, being part of us and become part of, part of, uh, our institution, our leadership. And so, um, that's why I think that's the most important. Now, all these other things we're talking about, creating a broader, uh, uh, community, helping our members, I think all those things potentially feed into that. And so that's the, that's, uh, uh, the first question, answer that one, or I think the thing I would most like to address and make some progress on as IEEE president. On the second one, uh, would you, would you want to speak at the upcoming fifth edition of the 2021 IEEE GCA IOT? So, uh, uh, let's see, Global Conference on Artificial Intelligence and Internet Things, maybe, conference in Dubai, albeit probably virtual. Uh, yeah, that could be, uh, yeah, let me know, let me know, Bob, um, if I can, uh, provide some value there, I, I would be interested in doing that. Um, if the time works out, I have to understand what it's going to be and what time of day. Um, and Scott had another one here. Uh, oh, this is, uh, Daniel replying to Scott. Okay, go ahead, Daniel, that'd be great. Citizen, citizen schools, low-income neighborhoods, I like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's something that actually I, I got involved in through my employer, through Western Digital, because Citizen Schools sends out their recruiters. They have partners that not only provide money, but provide volunteers, and we had support from our employer. You know, speaking of corporate social responsibility, um, they actually encourage managers, engineers to, to, to send their, uh, their, their team members to the schools, and those were multidisciplinary teams, there were, there were marketing people, uh, salespeople and engineers, uh, like, like ourselves. But as, as, as an engineer, sometimes I felt like, gee, I could bring along more of my IEEE buddies, you know? I could wear this IEEE T-shirt and actually talk about it a little bit more and, and give some to the kids. So I'm glad Scott brought that up.
Well, that's cool. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, and actually, um, uh, little satchels and stuff that you can give out, uh, especially to younger folks, that could be cool, that could mean an awful lot to them too. I mean, even just simple things like that, I mean, it's got to have some substance behind it, but even stuff like that is, I think, has value. Uh, let's see, uh, Robert says, Robert Beerwulf, uh, young blood renewal are key for continued existence, so you can do a talk about the young professional value. Yes, I'd be glad to talk to you about, uh, whether it's, uh, that opportunity can work out, and it sounds, uh, yeah, I'd be glad to. Let's see, Scott says, junior library, IEEE, junior IEEE library kits or something like that, just don't know how many people connect try engineering with IEEE, even though IEEE sponsors it. Yeah, uh, so in, uh, Region Four, they actually had this, uh, uh, library kits that were funded by, uh, uh, both IEEE USA and the IEEE New Initiatives Committee, which I was chair of. Uh, and, uh, on these library kits, uh, that they were doing to get people experiments and stuff people could do at home, um, I love that idea, uh, if we could expand things like that, that might be one way to outreach to people. Um, and in that case, uh, libraries oftentimes, uh, are being used by people lower income, also reaching out uh, to a different demographic than we might otherwise as well, and give them opportunities to get engaged in technology, which I believe is one of the best and, uh, most moral paths out of poverty. Is to know how to make the, how to use the, the laws of, of the universe to make new stuff um, and to provide value to other people. So I think it's a great idea, let's see, you got one more, citizen schools, Fabla. Okay, well, we're getting, we're getting close to the, to the top of the hour, folks, I want to thank you all for coming. Uh, oh, Robert has, uh, has his hand raised, why don't you, uh, give him an opportunity to talk there?
Yeah, I have my hand raised, uh, but, uh, that was because I wasn't necessarily aware if the chat was being monitored, but it is. So that's great, and indeed, GCIT is the, used to be the Global Conference on IOT. Uh, but we figured, uh, just having the sensors and the IOT, uh, brings us now a real big value unless you have the AI combined with it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The nice thing about the, uh, the conference that, uh, emerged and started in, uh, in Egypt, um, and it, very young professionals that were, uh, doing it, so, uh, giving them another motivational, uh, speech may induce more members in the MENA region, even though I'm not from MENA, I'm, I'm located in the Netherlands, so.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, uh, I, great idea, Bob, um, if the timing works out, I'd love to do it, um. I like talking about young professionals, uh, I, I've given talks to student groups about IEEE, I love talking to them about, uh, uh, young professionals and their value, IEEE young professionals, you know, what it, what it has and what it could have.
Perfect.
So shoot me, you know how to get ahold of me, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because we've, okay, uh, and I want to thank everybody for joining us today, uh, this is the last of these, uh, town meetings we're going to do uh, before the voting ends in October 1st, and, uh, if you haven't voted, please And, uh, uh, if you haven't voted, please do vote in the IEEE elections and, uh, let your friends, IEEE friends know. Uh, again, I'd love for, uh, even if I didn't win the election, a victory for me would be just getting more people than 20% of our eligible members voting in the IEEE election would be, uh, would be a, a victory. So, um, thanks, everybody, uh, for joining us today and for your great questions and thoughts. And, uh, uh, in a few weeks' time, we'll know the results.
All right, absolutely. Thank you, Tom.